This conference will now be recorded.
I'll put it down for you.
I'll be in St. Charles. I'll put it down for you.
That's the only thing. I don't remember.
All right, we'll call the word this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a presentation from Burnsville McDonald on the agenda. We'll now invite up the representative from Burnsville McDonald to go ahead and give that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Dawson. Do I need to speak into the mic or am I free to roam?
It'd be better if you... We're doing this remote and they can't hear you unless you're at the end of the mic.
Got it. Just wanted to make sure before I jump in.
Now, we do have a remote mic, a lapel mic, if you want.
I'm good, Kelvin. I've got the pointer. I just wanted to make sure if I walked away or turned around that he would still pick me up.
Yeah.
Anyway, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Jeff Barnard. I work with Burnsville McDonald. We've been working with the city of Sedalia on master planning, feasibility studies, and identifying next steps for wastewater treatment and wastewater treatment facilities for the city of Sedalia over the last three or four years. At least. And then looking at the drawings over here that date back into the sixties, the thirties, even before Tom was taking a look at those, Burnsville Mac has been in Sedalia for a long, long time. But today what we want to talk about is what we've done historically with the city of Sedalia. What's getting a lot of focus right now is the central plant and the north wastewater plant. They both have some compliance issues and some other issues in terms of maintenance and age-related issues that we want to review. We're going to compare two options. We looked at feasibility recently on consolidating the north plant, which is to be abandoned, with the central plant. The central plant is a facility that we're currently going through upgrades on. Looking at that versus another option of a new north wastewater treatment plant and making some moderate upgrades to the central wastewater plant. And then finally, we've got some or a little bit of information on INI reduction that we might hit later on in the presentation if we have time for that. One of the things I do want to make clear is that as you all have questions, please feel free and I am here for it. And then we've got all the team here with us. So I, just to give you a little bit of background, am more on the facility side. We've got Rochelle Lowe with us, who does a lot on the collection system side, knows the sewer pipes and stormwater pipes inside. Now Dana Hendryliter, did I get that right? Dana is a project manager. She makes sure we're all on schedule and on budget. And then Cliff is my boss. And he does basically program overview and understands kind of the high-level view of all the pieces that work together. And then I think new to the team is Lisa Odell with HDR. So this is your wastewater utilities map. How many folks in the room have seen this map before, understand the collection and treatment around Sedalia? Does everybody have a good understanding of it? Okay. Just to review it real quick, the city of Sedalia has three wastewater plants. And each of those wastewater plants takes a different portion of the city. The southeast plant on the very lower, I'm going to call it my right-hand side, it might be your left if you're looking at your screen. But this further south wastewater plant, we're not focused on that today. Takes on mostly residential customers and a little bit of commercial on the southeast side of town. Where we're focused today is the areas that are outlined in red here. That is tributary to the central wastewater treatment plant. And the areas outlined in yellow here, that is tributary to the north wastewater treatment plant. So just to give you a little bit of background on those tributary areas, when I call it a tributary area, that means all the flow from the yellow and the red go to the north or the central wastewater plant. And they have very specific attributes. So the red zone where the central plant is, there's a couple of things I want us to note. About twenty percent of the flow in that region or part of town is industrial. And those industries are very, very important to the city of Sedalia in terms of revenue generation, jobs, and so forth. The north part that's outlined in yellow, approximately forty percent of that flow is industrial, based on the data that we have collected with Ben and others over the last several months and years. So I just want us to understand that as we get into the issues with those two wastewater facilities. The last thing I want to mention is that during a wet weather event, and this is something Rochelle will get into more detail on, for a two-and-a-half-inch rain, each of these facilities could see a volume of up to twenty million gallons. And the way that's currently addressed is that each facility has what I would consider an abandoned lagoon or abandoned earth and pond. It was formerly used for treatment and now used for storage. Several years ago, the city converted those from treatment to storage, and they store the wet weather flows until they can be returned back through the treatment system for full treatment. Any questions there from the council? Okay. So I hit on a lot of these points as we went through it. The things I want to point out here, that the north wastewater plant has been given a compliance schedule to meet E. coli limits by two thousand and twenty-nine. And then more recently, the city entered into an abatement order on consent to achieve compliance at north and central. They don't have a date tied to that compliance timeline for north and central. What they've given us the opportunity to do is over the next year, write a facility plan for north and central to get them in compliance. And the schedule and capital improvements we lay out, that will be what they use to identify the schedule of compliance moving forward. So you need to be very careful in considering what we put into that plan so that it's achievable and affordable to the city of Sedalia and puts them in a position for success moving forward. Any questions there on the abatement order?
I had a question about, is it called PFOS? Or do we have a compliance schedule on that? I know they're still kind of coming up with regulations.
So the PFOS, PFOA, that whole deal of, that whole official, I think that I'll make that up. There's no wastewater regulation for, it's starting on that right now, or actually approaching it on September? Or, you know. Definitely, you see that right now, they just actually might have published it last month, so it'd be.
Yep.
Kind of still a schedule and hold with that.
Right now it's just drinking water, not what it is.
Can't speak to the reason why, but I don't want to emphasize that they're doing a lot of sampling on groundwater. And it really sets up a challenge for what, they take just a few things, the sampling, particularly the strictly in front of them. And you can't sample for thousands of people. So they take a few and tie them together. So far, I would say it's probably kind of been a lot of that big problem.
So Tom in Missouri, there's a GIS map. It's a database that's online where a number of communities have tested their raw water and/or their drinking water. And most of those communities around the state have tested results that are less than what the EPA calls their MCLs. And that's basically where they're trying to set their limits for acceptable or acceptance in drinking water. Where we're seeing the most issues, as far as I know, and I'm looking back at Lisa because she knows just as much as we do about this stuff, is in northeast Missouri along the Mississippi River. Currently, there's a couple of communities up there that are four or five times what those MCLs are, which are the acceptable limits in drinking water for PFOS and PFOA. The risk, the item that Sedalia would want to pay attention to moving forward on PFOS and PFOA is in your bio solids. And we've begun some limited testing around that. And we've also looked at some grant application to remove some of the accumulated solids in those stormwater holding basins, those earth and lagoons that I talked about earlier. So anything to add to that, Lisa?
Yeah, I think what you're looking at, I would ask you, I think generally, this is really good for the water. Like, if they end up, we're not the treatment staff.
Am I correct in saying that that could affect our composting operation going forward?
You know, potentially. Kelvin, where I'd encourage the city to go is the state of Michigan has been a forerunner in terms of identifying where the limits ought to be for PFOS, PFOA, and land application. And they've come up with a tiered approach. Every, if we sample water in any place in the wastewater system, it's going to have PFOS and PFOA in it. I'm probably wearing it right now. So it's in my blood. It's everywhere. So it's pervasive. It's not going away. But what we want to do and what I intend to do by saying this is eliminate the fear factor around it, right? You want to test it and have data to understand what the real risk is and then compare that data to how Michigan has approached it with their land application and biosolids programs. So, and their most heightened state or the state where they say that, hey, you need to stop, the follow-on action to Lisa's point is go look at your local industries or potential contributors and see where that could be coming from and mitigate it, and then you can go right back to land application. Does that make sense? Does that cover it or should we? All right. So this is the central plant today. It was originally constructed in the forties and then improved again in two thousand and one and in two thousand and twelve. Many of us went to this plant about a month or two ago to do some public meetings before the bond issue was issued. So a few things I want to point out with this plant. You start up here with the headworks. And then headworks has screening equipment in it that is in need of repair. And I've got a couple of pictures of that here in a minute. And then it follows through to the primary clarifiers. These primary clarifiers are a step in the treatment that's necessary because it reduces some of that load going to the plant. Primary clarifiers were constructed in the forties. They're a part of that original construction. Is there something? Okay, I didn't know if there was a question coming from online or... I was about to stroke out. Okay. So the primary clarifiers are very original. Following the primary clarifiers, a little pump station that takes it up to this big circular aeration basin. That's a basin that we're currently under construction on now to replace some aeration equipment and recently had mixing equipment replaced in it. This is a key part of the process. I'd say it's the heart of the process. Following the aeration basin, this was constructed in twenty, or two thousand and one, you go to these two final clarifiers, also constructed in two thousand and one. And I got some pictures later on of how these are supposed to operate from a biological perspective that I want to share. But this is, this aeration basin currently being repaired, the clarifier's relatively functional, and following that, you go to ultraviolet disinfection. And then cascade aeration, which brings air back into the water before it's discharged to Brushy Creek. I want to sit on two things for a minute. When I talk to everybody at the public meetings, I talked about wastewater being handled in three different steps. So you got the box of stuff that's coming in. That's the weather, the flow that hits the plant. And that's influenced by industrial flows, also influenced by wet weather, influenced by what that constituency is that is tributary to the facility. And then you have the discharge, which is Brushy Creek in this case. And in between, you've got a treatment facility. And something I want to point out with Brushy Creek is it has a history of impairment. And that impairment resulted in a total maximum daily load study that resulted in limits that are reduced relative to other limits we see in receiving streams around the state. Thankfully, and I believe this is accurate, that those, the health of that stream was restored attributable to those limits being lower. And then in two thousand and twenty-three, a new permit was issued on Brushy Creek, and it's got limits that are reflective of that history of impairment. So in order to not make the stream sick again, they're keeping the loading or the effluent discharge very, very low. So the limits leaving this facility are very stringent. And as time goes on, they're likely not going to get less stringent. So what I want to point out with that is stringent effluent limits likely result in more processes. And more processes mean you've got to spend more money on those processes because it's a new facility, like a filter, that is not currently at this treatment plant. Does that make sense? So Brushy Creek has a history of impairment. The other piece that I want to point out is that we've got, and this is a good investment and a good reuse of the former lagoon that was here. So this, this part of the plant wasn't always shaped like this. It used to come all the way up here, and it was basically the treatment system for the city. And over time, the nineteen forties vintage equipment and process was installed, and then the two thousands equipment process was installed and began filling in what used to be the treatment system. That's why it's got such a weird shape. This little rectangle here, like on a day like today, and I was talking to Ben earlier, this is where your wet weather goes first. So during a rain event, this facility will see a volume of over twenty million gallons. On an average day, a normal day, like if we were in July, this system might see one point eight million gallons. So there's a very big, what we would call a peaking factor tied to rain events at this facility. I think I hit all the points, Dana. Outside of the compliance piece, and this is where the abatement order on consent comes into play, a second to the last bullet point, talking about permit effluent limits not being met twenty of the last twenty-four months. But I think we all kind of understand and realize that. When I talked about the screenings earlier, I just want to point out, these are a couple of pictures of the existing headworks. Typically, we would see a mechanical bar screen that continuously rakes material off the base and puts it into a dumpster. In this case, Ben and team have to go out and manually rake this material off and put it in a dumpster, which is a labor-intensive exercise. The other piece of this, like Ben, if you get a rain event, you'll end up washing a lot of stuff to these screens that was just sitting in the pipes. And you could end up with those screens being more or less blinded. And then the flow's got to find a way up, over, and around, out to get through this little. This is the aeration basin, so this is the piece we're fixing now, and currently have work going on. This big splash right here, so the way these aeration systems are supposed to work, it's an EPDM tube. It's rubber. And it puts out a really fine bubble. We call them socks. When one of the socks blows off the end of the pipe that's got the air in it, you end up with a big discharge of air like this. And when you've got a big bubble of air, the bugs can't get to it as readily as when you have tiny bubbles of air. This means that this part of the treatment system isn't working very well. And then this other piece, and this has been corrected, the foam on top here is indicative of the basin not being mixed. More recently, the city has replaced that mixer and it's operating on a regular basis. Yep. Perfect. Okay, this is a piece that I want to make sure that we understand. So wastewater plants, like pets, they basically have to discharge or poop. So what we got with our treatment facility I was talking about before, you've got this stuff coming in. You've got the big circular basin at the wastewater plant. You put air and food and a big population of bugs in there, and what they do is they eat the food and they make more bugs. Eventually, you have too many bugs in the system and treatment can start to deteriorate, which affects what you're putting out to Brushy Creek in the liquid stream. What you've got to do is you've got to waste or kill off a fraction of your bugs every day. And if this system doesn't work very well, that doesn't work, which will in turn upset the biology of the plant and treatment deteriorates significantly. So currently, the city, Chris, I forget, is paying somewhere around twenty thousand dollars a month to operate temporary solids dewatering equipment. So Ben, this is operating pretty continuously, three to five days. Yep. So this is needed to meet compliance. And I got some pictures later on to better understand why this is so necessary. But if anybody comes to you in the future and says, hey, my solids handling's not working or my press isn't working, there's a very dramatic result in not being able to press out solids. It means that they're likely leaving the system. Just like you would have an SSO, you can discharge these as well off the back end of the plant if they're not properly addressed. All right, that was central plant. Any questions on central? Okay. And then here's north plant. North plant today sits on Pearl River, and it discharges to a stream that is not impaired. The thing that I want to point out with north is this facility, by and large, we're trying to figure it out with the drawings over here, has some issues that need to be resolved in the near term to continue processing wastewater in a way that keeps the plant as compliant as possible moving forward. So replacement of this plant or abandoning it isn't going to happen like tomorrow. It's going to happen after a new north or a consolidated central and north happen. In the interim, over the next couple of years, this plant needs to continue to be maintained and operated in such a way that the discharge is good. And Chris and Ben and team are working toward that with some light piping improvements, as I understand it, and some communication with DNR to correct a few things that were discovered over the last month or two. Is that all I have here, Chris? Okay. I'll stop there on that piece of it. This one functions similarly to the central if it were rewound back to the nineteen forties. So water comes in on the lower right here, passes through primary clarifiers. Again, this reduces the load going to the next step, and then to trickling filters. So different from central plant, the trickling filters act like a chiopet. The trickling filters have media in them that grows a fuzz, basically, that treats the wastewater. The water trickles through these trickling filters, that's the name, and then come off a drain at the bottom. And then that material that's discharged from the trickling filters goes to this clarifier. So this is a basin where all the bugs basically take a nap and settle to the bottom, just like what we saw on central plant. And then the clear water is decanted off the top and discharged to the receiving stream. The water that hits the bottom is basically the sludge. And that sludge is intended to go back to some sort of belt filter press and dewatered and then conveyed or shipped down to the compost site under normal operations. So outdated technology. So the trickling filter technology really can't be upgraded in such a way that it's going to meet new permit limits. I think I hit most of these other points. The safety piece, we'll hit on that in a minute at north plant. The big driver, the big thing at north plant that I want us to recognize, so at central plant, I spent a second talking about that receiving stream being impaired. At north plant, the receiving stream is not impaired. The limits are much, much more lenient. So when I say that the central plant has low limits, that means the water's got to be super clear when it comes out. At north plant, that water quality, breathing room is four times greater under some circumstances in terms of what we can discharge, which again drives cost. Because there's equipment that will likely need at central to address those lower limits that we would not need at north to address those lower limits. Okay. That was central and north, kind of current state of affairs. The next step in the discussion is around improvement drivers for north and central. So the biggest thing, and these drivers are typical for any sort of wastewater treatment system, that we would evaluate, whether it's Sedalia, Chillicothe, Columbia, any one of them. So consistent compliance, always key, because we want to keep DNR, EPA, et cetera, off our doorstep. Equipment reliability and operations. I'm going to tell you that that piece of it, good operations, good equipment, that also leads to good compliance. Future discharge limitations. Looking out on those receiving streams and say, okay, I've got this history of impairment over here, and I don't have a history of impairment over here. What's that going to do to me ten years from now in terms of what I got to achieve with my discharge water quality? And what's that going to mean to me as a community in terms of cost? Future growth. Do I have the land space available? And do I have the property in place to accommodate future growth and give myself flexibility without encumbering additional new costs? That would be above and beyond one or the other alternative. Safety, that's one of the biggest things here. I was going to make it last because I like safety to be a thing. Because we want the team, the city's team, the operations team, to have a safe environment to work in. And then finally affordability. So we look at all these things, all these bullets, and then we look at affordability and say, okay, how do we divide this up or dice it up in such a way that the city of Sedalia can take it in from a financial perspective? So we compared two alternatives, as we previously stated. So alternative one was consolidate at central wastewater plant and abandon the north plant. Lots of positive, lots of positive potential to that idea by consolidating to a single discharge. Kelvin, I think we talked about not having operations of two plants, consolidating to one permit to manage, and just a lot of really good things about it. And we wanted to look at the feasibility to that after the master plan results indicated a new north plant. So alternative two that we looked at was the new north plant and prove central plant to address those key things, the aeration system, the screening, and the solids handling at central, but build a brand-new north. So a couple of the feasibility discoveries I want to review before we get into some of those project drivers and pieces that we need to make sure fit. We saw an updated permit for Brushy Creek in late two thousand and twenty-three, about the time we were signing up for the feasibility study. And then the other piece, and that updated permit speaks to the needing to meet reduced or lower, i.e. more stringent discharge water quality at Brushy Creek. And then the new influent loading information. And that's something, that's why we got all these plans out, is we're trying to figure out what's happening with the influent loading information. So this is the only slide like this I have in here, and I apologize. But what I want to point out with this slide, so this is just a snapshot of one parameter at one plant. So this is the north wastewater treatment plant, existing TSS data. So TSS is total suspended solids. These are years on the x-axis down here horizontally, so from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three. And then this is pounds per day. So what we measure or want to look at in terms of water coming into the plant, not just concentration, but the amount of pounds. So the way we look at that is we look at concentration, multiply it by a mass, and then we can get a pounds per day in terms of what's coming into the facility. What I want to point out is these red dots, or this red dash that's lower here, that's where typical residential or domestic wastewater plants sit in terms of influent concentration. The blue lines are where the north plant is sitting on TSS in terms of what's coming into the facility. So these red lines, as you can see, are all much, much lower than these blue lines. The way we want to design equipment and facilities is to accommodate at least these max month conditions, so the majority of the time, you're meeting compliance. So it's a compliance issue. The other piece to understanding this loading is it's a cost issue. So there's a cost tied to treating higher-strength waste. So let's put a pin on that point for a second. When we first observed this, we're like, okay, two things. One, is it real? And two, if it's real, where's it coming from? We're still doing sampling to confirm where it's coming from and if it's real. And what I'm going to say is we're still a little bit blurry on that side of it. We're continuing to sample. So part of it is, okay, inside the wastewater plant itself, is there some sort of influence by a recycle stream coming back to the head of the plant that could influence the sampling? So does our sampling point pick up something that is coming back to it from inside the facility? Or if I backed off from the facility a few manholes, could we take another sample and compare it and say, are these the same or not? We hope or would desire for them to be the same. If they're not the same, there's some influence inside the plant that's impacting that influence sampling. So far, I think I'm explaining this okay. The other piece...
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, sir, Mayor Dawson.
Why wasn't this covered whenever we did the wastewater master plan, we commissioned it?
That is a great question. So with the master plan, we had data up to, gosh, Rochelle, was it two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-one? Yes. So Mayor, we had data up to two thousand and twenty. When we signed up for the feasibility study, we said, hey, can we have the most recent data from the city? And we were delivered that most recent data in early, it was either very late twenty-three or early twenty-four, it was in the December-January timeframe. And then we started really, we started looking at those numbers. And between twenty-two and twenty-three, those numbers that we observed in the master plan, we realized were not reflective of what we're seeing now. And we went about communicating that as quickly as we could to understand that, hey, we need to figure out what these numbers mean. And very early in the year, this year, Ben started doing more sampling at the plant. And we started doing exercises like this with the piping to understand what's happening or what has happened over the last eighteen to twenty-four months to influence the data, the way that we've seen it be influenced.
So what has changed?
That's what we're still trying to figure out. So something that we've looked at is there's been periods of time at the central facility and the north facility. Where solids handling hasn't occurred, like the belt press has been down, and they haven't been able to remove solids from the facility. So Lisa's team looked at that and said, okay, if we align when solids were being removed versus when they weren't, and look at the influent data at the plant, we're seeing some correlation there on TSS. So that could help address this piece of it. There's some other pieces, including phosphorus, where Ben has done some strategic sampling around the community, where we are seeing very elevated phosphorus. Same with total suspended solids. There's an industry in particular that I'm thinking of that is discharging probably ten to twelve times what we really expect to see from an industry in terms of total suspended solids coming to the plant. So I think it's a combination of things, Mayor, between some of the industries and what they're discharging and how that might have changed over the last eighteen to twenty-four months. And then some of the behaviors inside the plant and how that's changed or... And then some of the behaviors inside the plant and how that's changed or, I'm not going to say changed, but Ben's had to pivot and the operations team has had to pivot as equipment has been either broken or needing to be replaced or any other option there. So hopefully I'm not, does that make sense? Okay. Kelvin, anything to add to that? Chris, is that accurate? All right. Cliff, boss? Okay, good. Lisa? Okay, good, good. All right. Anything else there, Kelvin or Mayor?
Yeah, I guess bottom line is this, we're still doing the verification of the data. And we will continue to do that through it so that we know what we're dealing with as well. And as I understand this, as you develop the facility plans, and you know, I'm a novice at this, so I'm just trying to understand what you all explain. But as you develop the facility plans, we will also look at, as we get verification of the data, it might be cheaper to go to the industry that's creating it and treat it there or keep it from entering the sewer system at that point and treat it there versus at, you know, putting more cost into the facility. So it's a balance, I guess.
That's correct. Yes, validating it and then the balancing act of how to equitably manage it. So yes, that all makes perfect sense to me. And the thing that I want to emphasize is what comes into the plant can drive cost and what you need to leave leaving the plant drives cost. And what's coming into the plant, we're getting better and better resolution on that every day with the additional sampling we're doing. What's leaving the plant, I feel like we've got really good resolution on understanding how the history of impairment on Brushy Creek is impacting us and the lack of impairment on Pearl River and how that's affecting us. So-
If I could add one more thing and-
Yes, sir.
Again, jump in and correct me where I'm wrong. But it got very complicated, at least in my mind. You talk about million gallons per day at our treatment plant. And you know, so you can look at that from an overview standpoint and a big picture of this is the plant's designed to handle this much. But as I'm learning, water is not water. Sewer water is not sewer water. It is, you know, it matters what's in it and how dirty it is versus just the pure gallons per day. So that has affected why we are looking at different directions now than we were. Is that accurate?
That's exactly right. Okay. Well-
We'd be in trouble if I had to.
Yeah, I know Kelvin, at that point, my daughter runs track and field in cross country. She weighs all of 115 pounds but probably consumes 10,000 calories a day. I have a completely different body than her. If I consumed 10,000 calories a day, I'd have a real problem. One of the analogies I brought up with them was to drink like an iced tea versus she buys this Fairlife Protein Milk that's got some, I guess, lactose inhibitors in it because she's lactose intolerant. I can slam a tea. If I try and slam her Fairlife, I'm going to spew. So that's how your plants operate too. If you put something too thick into them, and that's what we're seeing, or want to resolve with this influent piece, they're going to have a problem or you got to build them to address the problem. So consistent compliance, man. Okay, so let's continue through this. So now I'm running through those critical items. So what I wanted to point out here, this was at your North Plant, maybe 18 to 24 months ago. I took this photograph. This is the effluent trough of the final clarifier. So this is where I'm talking about the bugs, the thick stuff settles to the bottom here, that's the sludge. And then the clear water decants over the top of these V-notch weers. And then that, that water looks pretty darn good at North and it can be achieved. The steps following this can include just discharging to the creek for many years. That has been acceptable. At North, that's no longer acceptable and there's a schedule of compliance tied to that. If the creek is impaired, you got to take this water and run it potentially through a filtration process. So those are the pieces that I want to make sure we understand. You got to grab this water out of this tank that is relatively well-treated from a biological perspective and run it through either disinfection or filtration and disinfection. I'm telling you right now that at Central Plant, likely you'd need to run through filtration and disinfection. At the new North Plant, what we would do is design it so that you had enough space to put in filtration later. But you likely wouldn't need it for several permit cycles. And in my world, that means you wouldn't need to make that investment for probably a couple of decades. The idea is to leave room for it, but don't put it in now. Put it in later so that you can keep your money in the bank. Okay, this is my favorite slide in here because I love it. So the big circular basin at Central Plant, that's the type of basin or the type of treatment we would do at a new North Plant or consolidated plant. That's activated sludge. This jar is basically full of the bugs that consume the waste in an activated sludge process. The idea is you develop this mass and whatever comes in, these brown little guys will eat it up. Now, the following tank is what I was calling the clarifiers. And this is how those clarifiers work, just in a little bit of a model. So these guys, if you're not stirring them up, will settle down to the bottom. This is that residual or that sludge piece that I'm talking about. This clear water at the top, that's what you're seeing come over the weers during a properly operating facility. Now, the things that can happen that upset this, and what happens when this gets upset, is these bugs won't settle. So instead of having this clear liquid go out over the weers, you have this co-mingled liquid go out over the weers. So what can cause this lack of settling is if you don't have good enough aeration or if there's not good enough mixing in the aeration basin or if you can't remove solids. The bugs will get upset if they get overpopulated or under-aerated or overfed and they won't settle and they'll hang out like this indefinitely. Instead of settling like this and going to the bottom of a clarifier so you can recycle these bugs or you can waste them out of your system. Lisa, I think besides Ben, you're the only one with an operations license in the room. Is that pretty? Okay. So just in a microcosm, I want to show you, this is basically how activated sludge treatment works. If you get it wrong, this is what you end up with. This is why we're so paranoid about getting the spaces of design right, to your point. Understanding where these higher loadings are coming from, if they're real, how to address them. Future discharge, oh, you've got my real slides in here. Oh, Dana, okay. It's the happiest moment of my presentation so far. So this is what a filter looks like. This is a three MGD filter. And how it works is you've got water that comes off your clarifiers, that clear water. And then it would hit membrane filtration, not membrane filtration, but it would have micro pores in it. And basically it would look like, I had a sheet of paper up here, you couldn't see through the piece of paper. That's how tight the pores are on a filter like this. It's an expensive process. At Central Plant, if we were to look at putting in filters, you'd likely have to pump to them because if you go out there and observe where the water level is in your clarifiers and the water level is in the UV disinfection, they're really close to each other. Meaning that I don't have enough room to drop a filter in and account for the head loss or the pressure that you need to drive through the filter media itself. The cool thing about filters is they do generate really clean water, but they're very expensive to put in and operate, maintain. For future growth options, this is the new North Plant site. This blue outline represents roughly the property line for the new North Plant. The only big impediment here is this 100 and 500-year floodplain. And we've got a couple of layouts we'll show you for a new North Plant option. But the new North Plant fits very nicely in here in a modular fashion. You could readily expand it in the future if necessary. But right sizing this North Plant based on more updated data will be important if that's the option that we move forward with. The Central Plant, I want to point this out. So this is basically a FEMA floodplain map around the Central Plant. And I bring it up because to the south of the Central Plant, you've got Brushy Creek here. To the north, we've got the railroad. To the, oh, man, I get my north, southeast and west mixed up. This is the east side, you've got a property line. As we were working through identifying feasibility of a consolidated Central, we identified that we can build inside this existing lagoon. It's not going to disrupt the flood issue to a great extent based on what we know with the flood modeling currently and the FEMA database. We'd have to fill in this portion of the lagoon to build basically a duplicate of what this is over in this rectangle here. And then in terms of wet weather storage, we just talked about the plant seeing a lot of volume during wet weather events. We can't arbitrarily just fill in this much of the lagoon. We'd have to rebuild it or replace it. And the city-owned property up here on the north side of the railroad tracks to do that with. So the takeaway points here aren't like you're on the floodplain. It's that you have a very tight site from the perspective of expansion and future possibilities with it. So that's another piece to this that I just want to identify for y'all. And then safety, and the next slide is going to be cost. So I flipped these just before we got in here. But from a safety perspective, these are the return pumps at the North Plant. And these are big, basically light switches. Those are disconnected from power. And this is a gigantic puddle of water right in front of them. So from a safety perspective, either way we go with the consolidation or a new North, we would want to address safety in a big way, in a substantial way. And any plant improvement we would make would be up to contemporary safety codes regardless of the direction we go. Okay, here's a slide everybody's going to like hone in on. So I expect a lot of questions here. So alternative one, we looked at consolidating the Central Wastewater Plant and abandoning North. Bernson McDonald went through a planning, feasibility planning exercise. HDR and Lisa's team went through an exercise of looking at the costs. The range of capital cost on the consolidated Central Plant is 70-ish to 80-ish million dollars. And the biggest detriment to that is that it well exceeds the budget the city has available to accommodate the project. And no matter, I feel like what we do with that part of the project, it's going to be really tough to have any residual money to address INI, which I know is a huge, huge issue for the city. Alternative two, again, we've got our numbers checked with Lisa's team as well here. Capital cost we're coming up with is 54 to 60 million dollars. So getting the plant built and getting back in compliance and then making the improvements at Central through the screening, aeration and solids handling can be accommodated inside your budget. And the goal will be to work this budget down to conserve additional funds to address influent infiltration. So I'll stop there. Any discussion Kelvin that you all want to have around this piece of it?
For me, alternative two makes the most sense, especially when we have such a huge INI issue in our community.
Yeah, and Tom, to add to that point, alternative two gives you the freedom to continue using the peak flow or the storage volume you have at North and at Central without messing with it at all. So those assets would continue to be used by the city to their benefit. Okay. Anything else, Kelvin?
Yeah, just for everybody's identification, just, you know, it is a difference. It is a change in direction from what we were, what we were talking before. So just wanted to make sure that everybody pressed that and was comfortable with it. And they've done a good job of laying out why, why the change. But just wanted to make sure everybody understood it is a change.
Because before, alternative one was what we were going with and what we went out for the bond for, correct? For 60 million dollars, which so then the issue was that there were some, I don't know, I guess I'm confused with it. Okay, I understand what you said about the testing, but it concerns me very much that we had a bond issue for 60 million and with the Plan One, that we have issues that things were found later. That's a lot of money. And we had a plan and then we paid you guys a lot of money too. Too, you know, that's your job. We are not experts on this stuff. So that, I am concerned a lot with, I'm glad we found a solution, but I'm concerned with the process before that I think that before you go after a huge bond issue like that, that we need to be sure that we've had all the studies done. And that was our understanding that they had been. So I'm, this is concerning for me a lot. I'm glad we have a, maybe a solution, but yeah, I don't know.
I 100% acknowledge what you're saying, Rihanna or Ms. Foster, that yes, that you went out for bonds and the communication was let's consolidate plants. In parallel with that communication, we were working through, I feel like that dropped. We were working through the feasibility study to understand, okay, is this the right direction or not? So early on, we had identified, hey, there's some risks with this, but we needed to make sure we knocked down those dominoes of risks. And a couple of those dominoes didn't fall our way in terms of the feasibility around doing a consolidation at Central Plant. And I guess, speaking from my heart, I'd rather share bad news like this now than wait a month or two or three and just let it sit because it's not going to age well with time. But I 100% understand the concern. And there was value in the feasibility study around the consolidation because without some of the discovery we had around what was coming into each plant and some of it, I'm going to say is real, some of it, I'm going to say is likely to get knocked off the table. But without that level of discovery, we would not have found some of the things we did that's going to inform better decisions moving forward. And we're going to continue to collect data to build that foundation and make the best decisions possible. But totally understand your point.
Well, I guess what we have to figure out is to go with alternative number one or two, what would be best for the future of Sedalia?
So let me, I'm going to jump through a few slides here that I don't think are important. So in my opinion, and in Bernson McDonald's opinion, and I think HDR, last time we had a call, compared with this opinion, the best path forward would be to move to a new North facility, that alternative two. And what that gives you the opportunity to do is one, save some money relative to alternative one, to dedicate to INI. The other piece to alternative two is this is a rough site plan or schematic of what that initial Phase One construction might look like at the North Plant. You can see that you're not using all of your property with Phase One. It's intended to have a build-out view that could look much, much bigger to potentially, and this was part of our master planning effort, to bring Central Plant to that North Plant and basically convert Central Plant to a pump station at some point in the future, be it 10, 15, 20 years from now. And then to accommodate growth around the North tributary area. Because we understood at the time, there was a lot of anticipated growth on the north and west, east side of town. Does that answer your question, Mr. Cross?
So I'm sorry I was late, but I couldn't help it.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying now, alternative two, are we still going to have any kind of tie between Central and North, the new North? Any kind of force made or is that the problem that you encountered that-
There will not be a tie in the current plan in the near term. In alternative two, there would not be a tie between North and Central. There would be no pipe connecting the two facilities.
So simply we'll be able to take care of whatever-
It would be a standalone facility and the new North would be a standalone facility.
And the new North is a scaled-down facility at this point that you can't experience?
Yes.
Wait, I'm caught up.
Okay. Okay. Nothing else?
So now, if we went with alternative number two, could you say that we just did a Band-Aid job on the North Plant and Central Plant?
So-
More or less?
The North Plant would get wiped off the map. But the plant has done a great service to the city. It's lasted 80 years. And it's, at the time, it was a contemporary great facility to invest in. But that plant would no longer be in operation at all. The new North Plant would take all the north tributary area, the big yellow area we looked at earlier. And you'd continue to use the flow equalization at North, the old lagoon or pond where you can store wet weather. So those assets would continue to be used by the city, but the North Plant would be completely eliminated. The Central Plant has a few key elements that need to be addressed. One is influent screening, so they don't have to be out there with their rake every hour of the day to remove screenings and debris from coming into the plant. The other piece is replacement of the aeration system, which we're currently under contract to do and is being implemented like as we speak. And then the last piece at Central is some form of solids de-watering. And what we've talked to Chris and Kelvin about is, okay, we could do something almost modular in terms of that solids de-watering piece so that, okay- modular in terms of that solids dewatering piece, so that, okay, we could, we could put it in a building, we could have it skid-mounted, and then ready to deploy at a different location in the future if that plant were to be decommissioned at some point. Does that make sense? Okay. And the price for the solids dewatering, the screen, are both included in the numbers you have on the screen. The aeration basin equipment cost is a separate project. It's being executed under a different contract. So, that's, that's not reflected up here in front of you right now. That's being, I don't know how, you're covering that Kelvin, but it's a separate, separate piece.
Yeah. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we talked about too is, is the improvements that we would have to make on the headworks piece, that screening and all of that, at the point that you do make, pull the trigger to, to put in a pump station and pump all of that to the new north. At that point, that stuff would still be needed because you, you want to get those big rags and junk out of it before you put it into a lift station and pump it again.
Yep. The screens would have use for perpetuity.
Yeah.
You'd have to maintain and operate, and the screen is a mechanical piece of equipment. So, by all means, would need to be replaced eventually. But screen always has value, the solids handling, design it so that we could perhaps pull it out and move it somewhere else later. Yes, sir.
In alternate, with, with, alternate two, we do have a budget for decommissioning the old north plant?
The north plant, um, so are you talking about demolition, demolition or just decommission?
I mean, I'm not sure what we need to do, but whatever we need to do when we do decommission, that's in alternate two?
Yeah.
Type of conceptual estimate?
Yeah, we would pipe around the new, the old north plant, and then it would, I don't believe, under our construction contract, be decommissioned on site.
So, it's just going to...
It would sit.
That concerns me.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not convinced we can just let it sit.
I think there's a certain amount of efficiency that would absolutely happen, and then, and the cost allows, there's just about how far we can take that down. Obviously, it's got to be a safe point, right? If it is abandoned, that asset is placed, right? It's not going to be all piping.
Right. I, I can imagine what's there.
Yeah.
It's not going to be, we need to know. And we need to know not only the physical plant, but we also need to know that in the old settling basin, some type of engineering one-level study, I think.
Mm-hmm.
To know if there are any, if there is any chemistry there that we need to deal with.
We can do that. We can, we can decommission it in a way that it's safe, as Dana's getting at. I thought, I was perceiving you to say, are we going to have a greenfield site there when we're done with everything demolished?
No, I just want to make sure we have a plan.
Yes.
I don't want to just turn it off, and, and I know we won't.
We would incorporate that into the plan.
For me, that's what decommission means.
Yes.
And, and part of that side, keep in mind that that's where the pipes are going now.
And, and that's where we're going to...
It's got to become a lift station to get it to the new north plant. So, I just asked a question earlier, and I'm sorry I was late. I called, but I, I had to be somewhere. Is there going to be a connection? Is there, you are now saying there is going to be a lift from the new north, or from the old north to the new north?
Absolutely. I misunderstood your question. I thought you meant was there a tie between Central and North?
Yeah.
There's not going to be a tie there, but from the, the existing north to the new north, yes, there will be a tie there. I promise you that.
Yeah, okay. It's, there's some moving parts, aren't there?
I got confused.
No, I, well, I mean, yeah, no, I, I think you asked about Central and... I did. And, I mean, and that was the original, and at one time, we were talking about that. But we're still going to lift from new north, old north to new north.
Yep. Did Rochelle leave?
She did.
Okay. Gotcha. I think there's also a concept out there where the flow gets picked up at the existing north and flows by gravity to the new north. And then we'd have a lift station at the new north to pump into the process, which could give you a low point there for additional interceptor sewer to come in based on what we looked at in the master plan a couple of years ago.
I think we're, this wasn't very, it was a separate capital project.
Correct.
Henrianna was concerned, and I understand her concern, but, but basically, conceptually, we're doing what we've always said, to some degree, in a conceptual phase, what we've always said we were going to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think we're good.
Okay. Kelvin, I'll take a seat then. Is that...
Okay. Who's got the rest of the slides then?
No, wait, hold on. I need to go over more slides. This was just a feasibility study results slide. We were looking at the Central Plant consolidation versus the new north plant and Central Plant rehab, going through the, and we've already kind of gone through many of these attributes. Mr. Bliss, I think that there's a, there's probably room for us to have another conversation and maybe run through some of the information that precedes this slide, but this is kind of a summary of where the, the findings went. And the biggest pieces of it were the compliance challenges at Central based on the stream having a history of impairment. We've got to meet much, much lower limits, which means more equipment. So, now and in the future, Central Plant consolidation is going to be really tough. And then from a site constraint perspective, Central Plant has a lot more obstacles adjacent to it than the new north plant. So, that future growth piece to either accommodate new customers or new permit requirements is really tough at the north plant. And then, of course, affordability, we just, we just spoke to that. Safety and either option would be similar. We would do what we need to do to get the facilities in a safe and operable manner. And that was it on the Central Plant consolidation versus the new north with Central rehab. Cliff, do you want to catch Rochelle's slide?
Yes. I'll probably go through this, but I got Rochelle to back me up. So, inflow and infiltration, that's what we're talking about when we talk about I N I. And I know we've had several conversations with council over the years. There may be some new council members here that may not have heard this, but inflow and infiltration is the wet weather that gets into your sanitary sewer, right, versus the wet weather that gets in your storm sewer. It's where it's supposed to go in the storm sewer. When it gets into the sanitary sewer, we call it I N I, inflow and infiltration. It's not supposed to be there. Takes up capacity in your lines, your, your distribution lines or your collection lines. So, it gets into your sewer system. It could back up. So, those lines may not have the capacity to take that flow all the way to the treatment plant. So, it could cause some backups. When we say backup, it means it surcharges, it could get back into manhole, raise flows in the manholes, eventually maybe even overflow a manhole. But it also can back up basements too, right? Because that line can only handle so much, and if you add laterals tied into that line, it starts to back up, right? So, that's when you get basement backups. So, I N I is not good. Your system can handle a little bit of it. It was designed to handle a little bit of it, but it can't handle a lot of it. And I think this past week, I think you guys have seen some of the issues with that. When we did the master plan, what we started out with is we did flow monitoring. And flow monitoring measures the flow that's actually coming in the collection system in your sanitary sewer. And, and the key behind that is we wanted to see the flow during dry weather flows, what the normal operation flows are. Your system handles it, handles it great, right? You can get all the flow from a normal day, and you can get it to the treatment plants. When it rains, then we quantify how much wet weather is getting into your collection system when it rains, right? And what is your system, how does it handle that? So, we developed this hydraulic model to kind of show what happens here in dry weather conditions, how your system handles it. And we also showed the model when it handles wet weather, what happens, where the overflows are occurring. So, that was done during the master plan. So, we quantified the flows, and we built this hydraulic model to show you guys, here's where some of your bottlenecks are when it rains, right? That's, that's a big problem. We also, at that time, talked about, okay, what are the next steps when you have I N I in your system? How do you get it out? And these kind of outline what those next steps are. One, we identify, we need to go and identify where are those sources that are causing that I N I. And those sources could be on the public side, and that can also be on the private side. So, some of those public sources, which I think you guys have faced in the past, that are in your sewer lines, your main lines, where in the past, you've come in and done some cure and place type, where you've actually replaced the lines, or you've put some liners in your main lines to help solve some of that issue. Other issues, where there are bigger issues which you may have are cross connections, which could be curb inlets that may still be tied in from back in the day. Like in that central area, I think Rochelle or Jeff showed you where the high inflow and infiltration is. It could be tied in from some indirect flows or direct flows from, from curb inlets or from catch basins that are still tied in. Those are some of the public sources. On the private side, you may still have some issues too, where you may have some downspouts still tied in. I believe you have an ordinance where you did the downspout disconnect program. But downspouts on your, on your houses contribute, if they're tied into the sanitary system, they contribute to a lot of flow. And you may think, well, one house is okay. Well, that house may be your neighbor's house, which may be upstream or downstream of you, which is causing a lot of flow, which is causing, causing a lot of surging. So, downspouts are big inflow sources. And when you have four of them on a house, and every house on the block has them, that's a lot of inflow sources. Uncapped cleanups are another source that are, that you don't think may be big sources, but they're in their yard, in your yards. They may be low drainage areas, and a lot of people use them to drain their yard. So, those are big sources of inflow. Those are the types of sources that we need to identify to say, we need to get these sources taken out. So, the process of an I N I reduction plan is quantify it, we've already done that, identify that, find out what those sources are, where they are. So, that's the next step, is to identify where those sources are coming from. What we laid out in the master plan was, let's, let's do a focus area, right? We want to go systematically through your system to remove, cost-effectively remove, those types of sources that are causing those problems. I think that's the key piece, is when we say cost-effective, because you may have a lot of sources. You may have, you may have cracks in your pipes that may be causing some, some flow to come in. You may have those big inflow sources. So, we want to make sure we're taking out the right things that make a lot of sense that are cost-effective for you. So, to do that, we needed to study an area. And when I say study an area, I mean, go out, smoke test, do some manhole inspections, televise sewer lines, talk to owners, are you having basement backups, getting the understanding of what's causing those sources. So, once we identify those sources, we can develop a plan to take those sources out that are cost-effective. It doesn't mean once we find a major inflow source, like a curb inlet or a cross connection, we disconnect it, because that's what we're going to say. We're going to have a list and say, hey, we found a curb inlet that's tied in. This is, this is a silver bullet. Let's take this one out right now. We're going to do that. But we're also going to identify how many defects are and what needs to be taken out. So, that's that identification in the rehabilitation plan. And then we go back and afterwards, we flow monitor again, say, how much did we take out? How much flow did we take out? Can we take more out? Is it cost-effective to take more flow out or not? And then we look at that model. Do we need to build a bigger pipe to handle this flow, or is the pipe big enough now? So, it's a, it's a systematic process. Sorry, I jumped way ahead. Rochelle would have done a better job on this. But in the master plan, these are your, these are the four basins or five basins that we did flow monitoring in. So, when we say an I N I study or an I N I project, that red basin, the reddest basin is where we start. We say that's where your most inflow and infiltrations are, sources are coming from. We think you can get your biggest bang for the buck by focusing on that area. And that focus means, let's do a study there. Let's get your smoke test. When I say study, it's not just, hey, we're going to study. We're actually getting out in the field and doing work. Smoke tests, manhole inspections, TV inspection, let's find out where these sources are. Let's get those disconnected. Let's develop a plan that does that. We start in that one basin, next time, we go down the next basin. Let's look at that. Where are those sources? Where are those major sources? Are there major sources we can get disconnected right away? That's the next step. So, that's a, that's the I N I study piece of this. I know in the past, you guys have spent a lot of money on, on trying to remove I N I. And what you did was you used the equalization basins to be able to handle that wet weather flow, which they're working great, but you've got to get that flow to that equalization basin to hold that flow. You know, we talked about twenty M G D coming in on a wet weather event. Well, those equalization basins are holding it. It's still in your collection system. It's still in your pipes. You haven't removed it from your pipes. That's what this is going to do, is look at how do we get that out of our pipes now? So, that's, that's the I N I reduction plan. Our plan with that is, hey, as we do this plant, we develop the plant, and the money left over from the plant is going to go towards the I N I program. And it's going to be a program. It's not just a, it's not just a one-time deal. The thing with inflow and infiltration is kind of, it's kind of like a whack-a-mole. It's, you may fix it in one area, and it shows up in another area. So, you have to do it in a systematic process, a data-driven process, to get it done right. Otherwise, you're just going to build bigger pipes or bigger treatment plants to handle it. Well, that's why we've got a plan to it. So, Jeff, I don't know if you want to talk about the, the schedule here, or Dana's going to talk about schedule. Any questions in regards to the I N I plan? Does that make sense to everyone?
Just to add to that, Cliff said, just to emphasize it, that doesn't mean we're going to wait to fix the problems that we already know are there. And we will do that even outside of this project, you know? And so, just to assure the folks that are having surcharging now, I guess is what we call it, where they're, where it's, the line is not big enough to handle it, we're, we're going to, we're going to be fixing those as we go, as opposed to, you know, waiting for another study and another plan, and two years later, we might start putting pipe in the ground. That's, that's not what they're saying.
Yeah. The last thing you want to do is put in a bigger pipe to handle that flow because now you've built a real big pipe, and you still didn't take your I N I out. So, it's a matter of going in and looking, cost-effective analysis to say, this is what we want to take out. Does that reduce the size of a potential pipe?
Yep.
So, that's, that's exactly right. And, and to be honest with you, you know, when we have conversations with you about this past surcharging event, maybe there's known inflow sources that are out there that, that weren't disconnected when you did your C S O separation program, like, that's where we got to hit first. That's where we go first. It may not be in this basin that we're targeting, but that's a big source. Let's go take care of that one.
Okay. All right. And?
All right. So, as we talked about, right, we're recommending moving forward with a new north wastewater treatment plant, and then addressing the items at the Central Plant that are simply in need of replacement, right? We have some good infrastructure there, but unfortunately, wastewater treatment is a harsh process, and a lot of equipment only has, you know, a twenty, twenty-five-year lifespan. And so, we're at that renewal stage on the screenings and on the solids processing. So, as the city's been working with M D N R on the abatement order that got entered into in March, one of the pieces with that is that a facility plan has to be submitted to the state within a year of the signing of that abatement order. And the facility plan is actually, it's a statutory-driven requirement. So, there are specific criteria that have to be submitted to D N R to comply with that facility plan. And so, that's the next step for the, the plant. And so, that, we are lining that out at about a nine-month process from kind of where we're at today. And so, what I've got on the, the screen there is kind of assuming, kind of a notice to proceed in early June, that we would be starting into that facility plan. And the first, really, probably, my goal is within the first two months of that facility plan, that we are working with the city staff and with H D R, as we've all talked about the data, and trying to identify what a reasonable basis of the influent characteristics of the facility should be for designing, because that sets the basis for everything. And so, really focus in on that hard in the first two months to get that set. And then, the rest of that facility planning process is, we have to, again, by statute, look at a minimum of three different treatment technology alternatives and to evaluate. And so, we're working with the staff on what's, you know, we'll do comparisons, like, capital cost compared to operational cost, compared to operational, I'm blanking on words here, like ease of operations, right? What's more forgiving versus what's a, maybe a more intensive technology, and you might need a different skill level in operations to be able to maintain that, right? There's some great small footprints that if you know how to operate it, and you've got a pretty consistent wastewater stream, they might be great. But if you've got something that comes down the pipe that's kind of an upset, it can throw your plant off for the next week, and you're trying to, you know, do everything you can to recover. So, we've got to balance those decisions. And that's a lot of getting input from, from Ben and his group, and Lisa, especially with and Lisa, especially with her operations background, will be a great step in that process of the alternative evaluation. So once we submit, and what's on the schedule here is kind of like what I'll call the worst case, right? It's working from, we know we've got, at a minimum, an April 1, 2029 date, that we have to have the North Plant offline, because that's a date that was set in your 2019 permit. Regardless of what's happened with the abatement order, that date does not change. So once we get that facility plan in, we have the opportunity to really set the schedule, and once we know what the technology is, and look at it and say, okay, the equipment procurement times on it is, you know, nine months to a year, depending on what it is, what the construction schedule is, and we can set that in the facility plan. Once that facility plan is submitted and approved by the state, that is now also a compliance trigger. So we need to make sure that we are being conservative as we're putting that schedule together and working through that. So the design-build process that the city is opting into for executing this project, once we complete the facility plan, we jump into what we'll call kind of the 60% design. And that's where we are actually going out to the market and getting feedback from equipment vendors, from subcontractors, and that's where we set the construction prices at the end of that 60% design window. Who would anticipate that being a year timeframe once the facility plan is determined? Obviously, we'll work to accelerate these pieces as we can, but that's kind of what I would lay out there as the worst case. Does that make sense? Any questions on that?
Okay, so just to make sure, and I'm confident they will back me up on this, that I pushed them very hard to make sure that all of the engineers in the room were nodding their heads in the same direction that this is the right way to go. And so it is very complex. It's very, a lot of science and biology and all that kind of good chemistry and everything else involved in this that I don't understand. But we wanted to make sure that all of the experts were here to answer your questions. And so the next step, the decision that you all will have to make is we will bring you a proposal at the next council meeting to enter into the agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald's and HDR. Burns &amp; McDonald's agreement will be to develop the facility's plan, which is the next step. And then HDR will, our contract with them will be as our owner's rep, as we call it. My simplistic way of looking at it is it's another expert looking over their shoulder and consulting with them to make sure that, yeah, they agree that this is the best solution for value. And so those will be the two agreements that we'll be bringing forward to you guys. And so, again, if you have any questions for them or any concerns about that agreement, they're all here to help answer your questions.
So you guys will be doing the scheduling?
Yes. Yeah, we'll be developing the schedule as we're working through the facility plan for the next piece of it, the construction phase.
Yeah, and I guess, another piece, I guess, just for everybody to completely understand as well is that, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, our plants have not been in compliance with DNR, and we've got to, you know, make sure this facility plan is developed in conjunction with DNR. We, you know, Chris has done a great job, and Ben has been keeping DNR informed. DNR is well aware of where we're at and where we're headed and all of that. We have taken the approach, we are not hiding anything from DNR, and they, so far, have been good partners with us, so to get us to where we need to go. We either wore you out, or you don't have any questions.
Well, thank you very much for your time. Certainly, if you have any questions with any of us, we're more than happy to answer them.
Chris, are you comfortable, or do you have anything you need to, want to say to council or whatever?
I'm not sure I can add anything to this, but it's said already. You know, it is a complex process. My background, again, is in engineering, but these are very specialized processes that need to be done, so it's not, it's not something that you hire somebody on to do and stay with you with the city. You always, typically, most of these go outside and hire professionals that do this on a daily basis. It's just not in everybody's daily work to do that. You know, I think the frustr- not the frustration, but the concern was, you know, when we looked at, you know, trying to consolidate and do, just eliminate one discharge point, you know, we looked at it from the standpoint, from my point of view, of what was shown in the master plan. And after going down that road and looking at what we have at the Central Plant, and if the numbers, you know, were correct, I think we could have gone that route. But with the new data that we have, and I think it's important, because you don't, again, in a conceptual-wise way, you don't want to build a plant that isn't going to meet your requirements now and into the future. And I think it's part of my job as your engineer to look at these things and say, okay, what is best for the city? And I don't want to go down a track that, just because I thought it was right, and we go the wrong direction, it's time to get off, reevaluate, and do the correct thing for the citizen. So I guess where I'm kind of headed with that is, more data is always better. And it's a lot, it's less expensive to gather data than to build a plant on something you don't know. So that's kind of where we're, I guess that's kind of the process that we're in. And I'm in agreement that, you know, as time goes on, as you certainly see this everywhere in government, you know, restrictions become tighter and tighter. And if Brushy Creek is not going to change, even if it didn't change, you know, at some point in time, you've got to hit a limit at Central Plant. So I agree that, at this point, yes, it appears to be that North Plant is the best place to go now and into the future. And if you have any questions, glad to ask, answer them, but that's kind of my, where I'm at. Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right, well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Figures. All is in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.